So very well, thank you all for coming. We call this meeting to order. It's a regular monthly meeting of the Alexander County Board of Education, taking place here at 700 Lyle Down Road in Taylor'sville, North Carolina. Today's date is Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. We're going to start with a pledge of allegiance, Sugarloaf Elementary students. Ms. Macy Turner and Mr. Felix Viney, fifth grader.
If you'll come forward.
You'll come forward, please, so we can lead us through the pledge of allegiance.
Okay. You can stand at the podium, that'd be perfect, thank you. Oh yes, she needs some moral support, don't you think? Yeah.
Attention. Attention to the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Good job.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you so much, great job. So next, which is not on the agenda, but I want to make mention. This week has been a sad week for us. We've lost two people close to us. Ms. Bridget Ryan lost her father, Felix Webster, this week. And then secondly, we lost our board member, David Oldham, yesterday. And you can see a picture of Mr. Oldham. So I would like us all to please bow our heads and give a minute of silence and pray a few words for Mr. Oldham and his family and Mr. Webster and his family. Thank you all. So, the agenda's been provided to the board, for the pleasure of the board. Do we have any questions or concerns regarding the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Provided, the motion was provided for approval by Mr. McLean and seconded by Mr. Daganhart. So now we go on to the next item on the agenda, the honors and recognitions. Dr. Hefner.
Thank you Vice Chairman Agüez, and I would like to ask for you to assist me in this recognition. You might know the student that we'll recognize tonight. Let me know if you do, okay? Uh, does. This is my favorite part of every meeting that we ever have, and it's my pleasure tonight to recognize Alexander Central High School junior Brennan Agüez for his acceptance into Governor's School. Brennan was selected from 1,700 students across the state, and he happens to be the son of the Board of Education Vice Chair, Robert Agüez. The acceptance letter touts Governor's School as the oldest institution of its kind in the nation, with a proud tradition of excellence. Coordinators tell Agüez, "We look forward to you joining us and adding your own experience to this rich tradition." Brennan will study social science during his summer month at Meredith College in Raleigh. Brennan, we are so very proud of you and look forward to the way that you will represent Alexander County schools during this learning experience. I would like for you to come forward, and I would like for everyone to congratulate Brennan.
Good job, buddy.
Congratulations, man.
Very well, next on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments? So no citizens have signed up for public comments. We'll move on forward to the consent agenda. The consent agenda's been provided to all board members. Are there any questions or concerns or comments on the consent agenda from anyone? Let it be noted that there were no comments, concerns, or questions on any. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Reeve provided the motion, seconded by Mr. Bowman. And now, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record note that it's been approved unanimously by the board. Next item on the agenda reports. First will be the Sugarloaf Elementary update. Mr. Mavory, the principal. You have the floor.
Good evening, Dr. Hefner, Vice Chairman Agüez, and other members of the board. It's my pleasure to present to you tonight the wonderful things that are taking place at Sugarloaf Elementary School. Thanks a lot. Our focal points for this school year have been relationships, rigor, and just simply being 1% better each day. And I'd like to take a moment just to talk through these three points. Relationships is nothing new. We focused on that last year, and as long as I'm there, we're going to continue to focus on relationships with each other, between staff and myself, with students, with parents, and also with community members. I continue to believe each day that every child in that building deserves somebody in their corner that's going to back them and support them, and we're striving to do that each and every day. Our second focal point this year has been rigor, and that's something we've worked on through our PLC conversations throughout the year. It's been an ongoing topic this year, and it will continue to be a conversation as we move into next year, just working to have students think deeper than just simple yes or no, working to ask deeper questions than just what's on the surface. And then lastly, it's very, very simple, but just simply 1% better each day somehow, some way, and that is for every staff member in the building, including myself and staff and students. And it's not, it doesn't have to be academic related, but somehow each day that we're growing just simply 1% each day. Next slide, please. So just a few things here that are taking place at Sugarloaf throughout this school year. A couple pieces that are different this year have been our clubs and our reading buddies, which we do. We alternate those on Fridays. So one Friday will be clubs, the next Friday will be reading buddies, and then we alternate those back and forth each time. They're each about 30 minutes long. And the purpose of this was just to make, help make school a fun place to be that kids are excited to come to. So our clubs, we have a variety of clubs in K-2 and 3-5. We have Lego Club, board games, there's been some yoga clubs, art club. We've been able to partner with the 4H and the Ag Extension Office and have somebody come in and help do a real basic cooking class that students are able to make different pieces. They make some French toast one time, they made some fruit salads and things like that. And then our reading buddies, we started the year off with partnering our upper grade students with lower grade students to help provide just some leadership opportunities for our upper grade students. But then, after Christmas, we came back and had some conversations and just with our letters training and science of reading that we've partnered students to partner read with a partner that's more closely aligned to their own reading level and their own reading ability. Our, down at the bottom left there is our brag tag board, and that's just simply what it is. It's a brag tag board. Anybody can post one, student to student, staff to student, student to staff. So it's really nice to be able to walk through throughout the day and just read those uplifting comments of, hey, you're doing a great job, thank you. And so the students have really taken off with that. That board has been pretty much full all year. We take it down at the beginning of each month, and then it's filled back up throughout the, throughout the month. Our canned food drive, we did that back in, back in the fall, and we raised over 12,000 items for the Christopher Crisis Center. The kids had a lot of fun with that. They got to squirt me with water, and anytime they get to do something to me, they seem to be pretty, pretty excited about that. Next slide, please. And then also here, these are just some other happenings that have taken place. The picture in the middle left deals with our Veterans Day assembly that we were able to have this year in person, just to say thank you to our veterans and the Sugarloaf community. That was a well-received big hit. The veterans seemed to really appreciate that, and that's something that we're looking to continue to do just as a way to say thank you for their service to our country. Also, within the last couple weeks, we've been able to offer a couple different things to our current students, but then also our incoming kindergarten students. The pictures there, the top two on the right and the bottom in the bottom center and bottom right. Our CTE department and some of their representatives came out to Sugarloaf to talk with our current fifth graders about what CTE is and what offerings they have and what they can do with that once they get to the high school. So there was some construction, some firefighting, the animal science, then also just some life skills as well. So that, I really appreciate Ms. Hoag and her department coming out to help out with that. And then we, we brought in our incoming kindergarteners also right after kindergarten screening this year, which was something new for us. Our, my kindergarten team felt like they wanted to try that, so we gave that a shot. And it was a really big success. We broke our kid, our incoming kinders up into fourths, and they came, a fourth came on Tuesday, a fourth came on Wednesday, and then so on. So by the end of the week, the majority of our incoming kinders got to spend about a half day at school with students in the building. They went in a current kindergarten class and sat through some instruction, and then they went to lunch and specials. And our current kinders were able to kind of buddy up with them and show them what life is like as a kindergartner. And I will say, that's been, was a big success for us. There were some parents who were kind of on the fence as to where they were going to send their child, and after that, we've received a lot of positive feedback, especially for those who were contemplating of going somewhere else that they're going to come to Sugarloaf.
And I'm assuming, Mr. Mavory, you kept the parents there and did some work with them, or they just dropped them off and left them?
They dropped them off and left them.
That's wonderful. That is wonderful.
About 11 o'clock, dropped them off, and we really didn't have any criers, which I was really surprised about to see that. So they came through and, and they picked up. Our current kinders kind of let them around and helped, and we just, this is what school's like, you know, and, and it was a big success with that this year, so. Next slide, please. Just looking at some academic data here, this is our EOG data from last school year. In K-2, we have achieved right at our core proficiency of 80%. We're proud of the work that we've done in K-2 with that, and to continue to increase that each year. In third through fifth grade last year, we did see a four and a half percent increase in reading proficiency. We were sitting at about rather under 50% proficient, which we're, we're glad to see that increase, but the work is, is not done by any means there. What you see in green is proficiency increase from the previous year. So for example, last year's third graders proficiency increased almost 11 points compared to the previous year. The group there that is in red, our fifth graders, didn't perform where we would like them to, but as far as the cohort itself, so that group of kids from fourth grade to fifth grade, they did grow, but they didn't necessarily meet the mark that that group in front of them did. And then, it's not up here, but our check-in data that we took right before spring break, very promising, exciting to see that. We've seen a positive increase in growth in, in third, fourth, and fifth grade. So we're excited to see where we stand at the end of the year. Next slide. And then this is the same piece in math in K-2. Again, we've reached that 80% mark, so just continuing to build on that and continuing to build that foundation for students. In third and fourth grade, or third, fourth, and fifth grade math last year, we were just under 60%, which was about 1% decrease from the previous year. So we're definitely looking to increase that this coming year. Our third and fourth graders, they grew from that previous year. The fifth grade cohort did not, but that cohort within itself showed growth from the fourth grade to the fifth grade year. And then our fifth grade science as well had a positive growth last year. So again, excited to see where we, where we end up. There's been a lot of hard work within of that, day in, day out, between students and staff. We've been able to do tutoring throughout the school year for students. We started back in October and went to about the end of February and took a little bit of a break, just everybody was getting burnt out, staff and students. And then we actually picked that back up today with some students as well. So we're excited to see where we, where we fall at the end of the school year.
Mr. Mavory, you mentioned you saw promising growth in the, in the NC check-ins. Was that in reading and math?
We just did the check-ins in reading. Our benchmark scores in math were okay. We saw some growth there. And then looking at our checking, or I'm sorry, our benchmark data as far as the county, we've got some bright spots, but we also have some areas to continue to work on over the next seven weeks or so.
Okay.
And then our Title I budget this year has been spent a lot, we bought, or I'm sorry, we've done three different data days for staff. Two of those were full days, and then one day was a half day. And what that is, has been time for teachers to plan, where they get the full day to plan, or a half day to plan. We dug into some data and did some work with that. We were able to hire an art and a TA position through Title I, and we were fortunate to be able to hire the same person for both of those positions. Our art position is two days a week, and then that same person does TA work the other three days a week. That art position has allowed us to do an extended planning every week this year with staff. So on Wednesday, K through three, get a 90-minute block of time to plan, and then on Thursdays, four, five, gets a 90-minute block to plan. So they get that every week in addition to the 40 to 45 minutes that they get the other days of the week. So that was just a way to try to increase their planning time, to be able to plan collaboratively and do some of that work. So that art position has been greatly appreciated in that manner. And then just the kids love going to art. That picture there, I was talking with our art teacher this morning, and she just, that's a picture of symmetry, and I'm not going to try to explain all the things that she does within there, just because I don't have that background to do that. But she's been a rock star to come in. We were very fortunate to find her and just get, again, to help kids be excited about coming to school. That, that picture there on the right is one of my favorites that I've seen this year of those students, that one little girl, she's just so excited about what's taking place. We've spent about, of our Title I budget, we've spent about $2,500 in purchasing new library books to update our library collection, and that will continue to be a priority as we move forward throughout the coming school years. We also have had reading and math nights throughout the year with each different grade level. That's a picture there of our most recent one with fourth and fifth grade, where students had to do some measuring and make some trail mixes and do some different pieces of that. So that was a little different spin on the typical reading and math night, but that was a, parents seemed to like that better, and so that's something we'll definitely look to continue. Next slide. Our community partners, we've got a long list of community partners that I appreciate the support that they give to the school, whether it's financially or through coming in to help or just giving of their resources or of their time. I would like to thank the Rotary Club for the work that they do with feeding students through the weekends, through the backpack program. That's a great asset to our, not only to Sugarloaf, but to schools within the county as well. And then I'd like to just take a minute to thank our PTO. Sugarloaf's PTO does a wonderful job.
Yes, sir.
We were able to have our farm festival in person this year with our, our auction, which was very successful, and PTO's getting ready to put on a golf tournament here in about two weeks on the 29th, a four-man captain's choice. So anybody listening or anybody interested in playing golf on a couple Saturdays, the link's on our Facebook, PTO page to, to sign up for that. But just a thank you to them, and then thank you to all the folks who make the, who make the work possible at Sugarloaf. And that's all that I have. Any, any questions for me?
Wonderful. Great job.
Fabulous presentation. Only one question would be on your fifth grade performance means, the erosion that you've seen in reading and mathematics, why is that? Because the rest of your population is really improving significantly. You're doing a great job.
So that group, the, the data that we had from last year, that cohort of students just in general was a little bit lower than some other cohorts. So I don't foresee that being the same this year. I think we'll, we'll see some different numbers there. But it's definitely something to, that we're continuing to, to work on, continuing to, to problem solve.
But do you think that that same performance curve is going to follow them into sixth grade and seventh grade? Are there remediation efforts that need to be put in place to help these kids?
Well, so I know what we did at Sugarloaf last year and this year, I can't speak for the middle school, was we continued to provide interventions, but have been built into our schedule to do two days of reading and then two days of math or vice versa, depending on how the week falls, to where it's building in every day that kids are getting some sort of intervention or enrichment help with that to target skills that they're struggling with. So that's been something that we've made gains in that area this year. I'm still not going to, we've made a lot of gains in that area. Still got some gains to make with that. But I don't, as far as that current cohort, I, I don't know. I know what I've heard from that group of kids that they seem to be doing well this year, so I don't know, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure as to why that decline was the way that it is. I know that was a group, again, still coming through part of COVID and, and pieces of that that missed some. So for example, that group, I believe, would have been impacted by missing some instructional fractions at the end of second grade, and that play, may have played a bigger part into some of the discrepancy that we saw with that group last year, even with the means of trying to intervene and trying to fill gaps and holes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very well, the next item on the agenda is our committee reports. Do we have any committee reports to be brought forward?
I will mention, the Boosters Club has their steak dinner and raffle on May 20th. If anybody wants to purchase tickets, I know me and Mr. Daganhart both have tickets, and a lot of Booster Club members do, so. Anybody that's wanting to support, it's a great effort. They put a ton of money into high school athletics, so it's a good time.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Daganhart cooks, so that's a plus in itself. Anybody that wants involved, just let us know.
Any other committee report updates? Very well. Ms. Mahaffey, you're next on the agenda to talk about our COVID funds update. Exciting stuff.
Okay, first I would like to say that Andrea Robinette, our Director of Federal Programs and Accountability, helped me prepare this report. And if you would allow me a personal privilege, Andrea's not here tonight because her daughter Liza is her birthday, and she wanted her momma to sell, home to celebrate her birthday. So I would like to wish Liza a very, very happy 11th birthday.
Thank you for sharing that.
Okay, if you look on the slide, COVID funds were given to us to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. When we make expenditures with the COVID funds, that is the bar we hold. It must be for the, for, for the prevention, to prepare for, and to respond to the pandemic. The COVID funds came to us in 37 different PRCs. Now, a PRC, a Program Report Code is, is, is a funds that are given to you for a specific purpose. So there were 37 of those. We started out with the COVID relief funds back in 2020, and those funds were distributed by the, the state. They had to be liquidated by 12/31/21, and we received $1,126,724. And those funds were used for the summer learning program, remote instruction, school nutrition, personal computers and devices, mobile internet, extended school year for exceptional children, Lowell County supplemental funding, cybersecurity, and personal protective equipment. There were nine Program Report Codes in that one. Okay, then we received the State Physical Recovery Funds. They had, they were expended by 6/30/20, 2020, and that we, the total received was $1,83,945, and those were for employee bonuses for essential workers. The next group of funds were the ESER funds. And you may have heard me say that ESER is my new curse word. And ESER means Elementary and Secondary School, uh, Schools Emergency Relief Funds. This was a, and, and we have to understand about the COVID funds, we were getting a lot of money very quickly, and we were getting a lot of, of, um, different opinions about the way we could use the money. So when we got to the ESER funds, they were, there was a lot more ambiguity, and for the first time, we got a relatively large amount of money that we had the ability to say how we were going to spend it. And so that was, that was one of the things that entered into this. So we have three ESERS. ESER I was, had to be expended by 8/30/22, and we received $1,013,247. And of that, $936,000 was basically money we could decide how to use. And I'll have to give a special thank you to Dr. Robin Hilton, who retired during this time, and she was the one who set us sort of on the path of how we would spend this money. Okay, the uses of ESER I, we began to employ personnel that I think we really needed for a long time. But this money enabled us to be able to, to hire these positions. We hired classroom teachers, nurses, instructional support staff, school psychologists, EC teachers, classified support tech staff, and we added to our technology, we added to technology support staff person because of all the remote learning we were doing at the time. We purchased digital curricula, health equipment, computers for the EC program, federal funds, uh, okay. The next one is the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund here. This money, we received $202,195. They, it had two purposes. $146,419 to employ social workers, and $55,760 for summer learning. Then we had ESER II funds that increased the ESER pot to 3 million, by, by $3,986,704. Those funds will end on September 30th, 2023, this, this September. We will, we will expend, right now, the remaining balance of those funds They came to us in seven programs. Three of those were summer programs that we will close out this summer. Okay, we, we continue to employ those same personnel, classroom teachers. We employed teacher, uh, we added teachers at the alternate, a teacher at the alternative school. We continued with the nurses, the instructional support staff, and behaviors, and added behavior specialist. We continued with the EC teachers, the classified support staff. We added an ESL classified support staff person, and we continued with the technology staff. We purchased digital resources, Canvas, our learning management program. We bought band and chorus supplies. We did after-school tutoring. We did some contracted services with EC, speech, and visual support. We did some contracted services with, um, EC, speech and visual support. And we, uh, contracted for a school psychologist. There was summer learning programs, uh, there was a, a career accelerator program that CTE did in the summer. We purchased iReady and we did retention bonuses for child nutrition. The next pot of ESER money will be, will end in September thirtieth of twenty-four. Now, we often say that these funds will end in June thirtieth of twenty-four. And we do that because we have to have a liquidation period for this money. We have to bring it to an end and so we can spend the remaining funds. The total we received in, in this ESER, uh, allocation was nine million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. We continued with those same positions. And, and you've heard me refer to those same forty-two positions. But we added an EC teach, some EC teacher assistants. We did a lot of af- after-school tutoring and math tutoring with these funds. We continued the Career Accelerator Program, we did retention bonuses for all, all employees. We spent almost three and a half million dollars in salary and benefits and bonuses to our employees who, who brought us through this pandemic. We, um, the rules of this program says that twenty percent had to be used to combat learning loss. And that was one point six million for us. We did Attendance Works, Go Guardian Software, um, Melinda Green, Glenn wrote a grant for National Board Certification Reimbursement. There was, uh, a principal retention supplement that was added. Driver's Ed received some money. Now then, what we propose to do with the remaining money, uh, we will continue to employ all those physicians that we've had. We will use some of it for computer software and active boards, Chromebooks and iPads. I had on this slide that we did last week, four and a half physicians. Actually, we met and discussed some teacher allotments. We think it's going to be more like seven positions we will add next year. Uh, if there is enough money, we could, um, consider doing an air conditioning project. Although Chris tells me that, um, it would be hard to bring that in. That would be hard to, because of the inability to get the parts to do the air conditioning project. We, um, have one planned for West, we can take a look at that. One of the end, I read an article last week on, um, ways to use the remaining ESER money. And one of the suggestions was to, we replenish libraries. And it's been several years since we've given the schools any real money to work on their libraries. And I, I think that would be one that we would want to consider. But we'll have some discussions this summer when we see exactly how much we're going to have, exactly what the races are, and, um, uh, how to feel, uh, so we'll know how much money it will take to fulfill these positions. I'll be glad to answer any questions. And you can see my little note, prepare, prepare for, respond to, and, um, uh, prevent COVID.
Thank you very much, very informative.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well, next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Hutton.
Thank you Vice Chair Agüez. Uh, this is attached in the agenda that you have before you. Uh, the first thing that I want to start with, we found out before spring break, and we're very proud to, to hear about some recent ASU mini-grant winners. Please join me in congratulating the following. Ashley Huss, a teacher at West Alexander Middle School, was awarded one thousand dollars for her project entitled Collaborative Accountable Discussion with Technology. Samantha Strathie at ACHS was awarded one thousand dollars. Her project is entitled Connecting Appalachia to Alexander with Street Art. And then Nancy Greiner with ACHS and West Alexander Middle. She was awarded five hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. And the title was Promoting Our Teacher Pipeline. Bullet number two, I want to ensure the public that we've not had any students overdose on drugs. I know that I have received a couple of questions about this topic, and it appears that the term overdose was used in lieu of drug use and experimentation. Although we have had some drug use, and I'm sad to say distribution, I'm very relieved that none of our students have actually overdosed. I would stress that parents, make sure your children know not to accept or ingest anything given to them by anyone other than a parent or trusted adult. And then one further precaution is for all parents to keep all of your medications, including CBD products locked away from children. Third bullet, Dr. Danita Dalrevis traveled to Raleigh today as part of an important and potentially impactful School Leader Day at the Legislature. The North Carolina Association for School Administrators sponsored the event, and Dr. Dalrevis was able to speak with Representative Jeffrey Elmore and Senator Eddie Settles. They both represent Alexander County. Some informal discussion was held about budgetary requests for public schools, merit pay for the new evaluation model for teachers, increased transportation funding, proposed principal compensation revisions, et cetera. Please join me in thanking Dr. Dalrevis for making this trip. Thank you. Board members, I have attached in the agenda an invitation to Ellendale's Leadership Day. It's going to be held on Friday, April twenty-eighth, from nine until ten-thirty. Please view that invitation because it does ask you to RSVP if you're planning to go over to Ellendale that day. The theme this year is Habits Lead to Happiness. And the students will be showcasing their leadership skills and all they have learned this year about the seven habits of happy kids. I'm disappointed that I'm not going to be able to attend, but I know it's going to be a great day. I hope that you will be able to go. Bullet number five, the Speed of Trust Training has been scheduled for June twenty-eighth, from nine until four-thirty in this boardroom. And I would ask that all of you mark your calendars because not only will we all be learning together as this board, but also all of my leadership team will be involved in that also. So I look forward to it, it's going to be good stuff. Bullet six, the Budget Committee met. Our official request to the county commissioners for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year was submitted on April sixth. The request totaled nine million, two hundred eleven thousand, one hundred thirty dollars. This is an increase of one million, eight hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred two dollars when compared to this current year. I've attached not only the request letter that was sent in, but a chart explaining the request. And I would ask that you review that. The Budget Committee, we discussed it thoroughly to come up with what the request would be. But for those of you not on that committee, please review that. And if you have any questions, let me know. Lastly, today's been a very difficult day for me, my administrative team, and all of Alexander County's school family. I'm just heartbroken for the Odom and Ryan families. I did receive arrangements for both families and would like to share for David Scott Odom, my friend and member of the Alexander County Board of Education, for twelve years. His funeral services will be conducted Friday, April twenty-first at three at Sulphur Springs Baptist Church. That church is located at one sixteen Patterson Road, Head Night. No visitation is going to be held, just the service. And then Felix Hill Webster Junior, father of Board Member Bridget Ryan. His funeral services will be conducted Friday, April twenty-first, at three o'clock at Damascus Baptist Church. The address is one twenty-eight Old Arbor Lane, Statesville. The burial will follow in Stony Point Cemetery. And Pastor Del Wallace and Pastor Rick Norman will officiate. The family will receive friends on Thursday, that's April twentieth, from six until eight, at Lindsay Hall at Stony Point Baptist Church. That address is two thirty-one Ruieton Park Road in Stony Point. My sincere request is that every person in this school system and county, please keep the Odom and Ryan families in your prayers as they navigate through very different, but very difficult times. So, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much for the update. Item number four on the agenda, unfinished business. Ms. Mahaffey, you have the four again to discuss policy revision, second reading.
We have, uh, four policies up for, uh, revision for second reading. I requested input and received none, so I would ask for approval on second reading.
Do we have any questions or concerns from the board members to move forward? Do we have a motion to move forward with the second reading?
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Motion submitted by Mr. Dagenhart, seconded by Mr. McCain.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Ah.
All opposed? Let the record show it's been approved, you know, it's been approved by the board.
Um, we have, we have five policies up for first reading, um, tonight. Uh, one policy, Community Use of Facilities is being, being brought by the, um, Policy Committee. I will get, uh, input on those and bring them back, uh, next month. We also have two policies that are up for, for first, two new policies that are up for first reading tonight. And I will bring those back next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that brings us into the new business portion.
Now we're to item number six. Item C, the new business.
Okay, so my resolution by the Alexander County Board of Education.
Item C, under new business right here, Head Start Non-Federal Share. That's okay. There we go.
All right. So Head Start Non-Federal Share Waiver, Ms. Kathy Met?
That's okay.
Yes, good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to request an approval from the board to send into the Office of Head Start a non-federal share.
Any questions from the board members? All in favor to move forward with your approval? Do we have a motion to go forward?
Motion.
Say again.
Mr. Bowman submits the motion, and Mr. Dagenhart seconds it. All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Let the record show, it's approved.
Good. And she's up again.
Head Start Carryover Funds?
Yes, the Office of Head Start notified our program that we have a small amount of money that is considered carryover funds. And I'd like approval tonight to use those carryover funds to support, uh, or offset the cost of purchasing tires for two of our Head Start.
Wonderful.
Any concerns, questions from the board members? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. McCain and, and Mr. Reese both simultaneously, so we'll give credit on both submissions and approval. All in favor, say aye.
Ah.
All opposed? Let the record show that it's approved, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
So next is item number E. Mr. Bowman, you're going to give us an update on the recommendations for the Old Wittenburg School property?
Yes, board members, I'd like to, um, bring to you tonight, the facilities has met and discussed Old Wittenburg property. Uh, we've discussed it numerous times. We were wanting to get rid of the property and we hadn't been successful the way it is. We feel like a lot of our issues is the building itself has pretty much not interested, anybody wants the property. And we feel like the property's worth more cleared than is sitting the way it is. So we have proposed to, if the board approves, to have the property took down, called off, everything cleared off, just a, a vacant lot for sale. And we feel like it will sell, and we feel like it'll bring more that way than it is now. So we feel like it'll be a investment that will, that will return favorable for us. So that's where we're at as a, as a committee. Um, I feel like we will need a vote.
We do, but there was also discussion during that committee meeting that, uh, to go before the zoning board and have that piece of property once the building has been demolished and, and all that removed, um, to have it rezoned into business commercial and then put the property up for sale again, just as, just as a lot.
And where are the appraisals in this process?
Appraisals for the demolition?
Well, those would be the estimates on the quoted cost, but appraisal on what the future value of the property would be after the refurbishment.
I don't think that anybody has pursued that.
Mr. Campbell's getting us new quotes for getting the demolition done.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll have to bid that out, so.
So that'll just give us a,
That'll give us an idea.
An idea of what we have right now, it would cost roughly somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars for the demolition and removal. That's what we have been given with, with one, um, with one person. But of course, we'll seek more to see if we can get a better number on that, but I don't know. But as far as what the tax value would be, if it is rezoned business commercial, I, I don't know what that would be.
Well, and, you know, the, the business case for two hundred thousand investment yields how much to the tax? So it's, it's a business case.
Okay.
And then there's a time value of money as to how long is it going to take us to move it. So those will be.
Well, it's taken, I started in two thousand fourteen, we moved out of that building. We moved the Student Success Center out of that building, I think in the fall of fifteen. Does that sound right, or was it sixteen? The county used it for a number of years after, but the building has actually been vacant and listed with a Realtor for a good amount of time, and we haven't had any. We've had some people look at it, but I think once they went through the building, they were so overwhelmed um, with what would have to be done to bring that building up to code with, with different, you know, improvements that would need to be made, nobody was interested with the building on it.
So during our transportation audit meeting, I know it was brought up that we may think about, may use that property in the future for a transportation facility. Is that still, has that changed now?
If that's something that the board decides to do, if they decide that they do indeed have the funding to build a new building,
Okay.
then that would be an option, it's not off the table.
Right.
But I think the first step.
It's clearing it off. Yeah.
Correct.
Getting it cleared off.
Yeah, the committee pretty much decided, either if we keep it and do something with it, we're going to have to clean it off either direction. But we know this tax value, we've been offering way less than half of that. And property around there has been bringing a lot more than that, that's cleared off. So we just feel like it's something that we need to invest a little money in to be able to move it if the board wants to move it, or it's going to be cleared if we decide to put something on.
When, when do we believe we can have that business case presented to the board?
Um, well, the facilities can meet and get some numbers by next meeting. I, I don't have a problem with that.
So are you proposing we hold off on a decision with that?
I think we, we would need a, the, the data and the business case before a vote on a decision. But I think we can make a vote on proceeding with the study.
Okay.
Right, so do we, do we have any questions, concerns, or? So do we, do we have any questions, concerns, or comments on proceeding with the study? Do we have a motion to proceed with this?
Motion to proceed.
Second.
Mr. Dagan Hart, Mr. Reese seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? We will proceed with the study and with the target date of the next board meeting for review of the business case in the study. Thank you very much. So next item is the school nutrition bid rollover, it's twenty-three, twenty-four. Ms. Kathy Cottle.
I'll take that. Board members, you have attached in your agenda the vendor recommendations. They would like to extend the dairy bid for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year to pet. This will be the first rollover since we put the dairy products out for a new bid last year. Actually, we only received one return bid for the dairy products last year. U S Foods is our current distributor for food and supplies, and they have agreed to a rollover for the upcoming year. So we would like to extend the rollover option to U S Foods. We procure using, or I'm assuming it says we procure, our procure, I'm not sure, our produce, excuse me, using some of the entitlement allotment, seventy-five thousand dollars last year, and we've allocated seventy-five thousand again this year. We do not have an additional produce bid. Correction Enterprises is the current chemical supplier. They are on state contract, so we don't have to have a separate bid for the chemicals. And Smart Mouth Pizza would like to extend our bid this upcoming year. We request that that rollover be accepted as well. So those were all of the vendor recommendations being made. Meal price recommendations. Since we've seen the struggles of our families to begin paying for their children's meals, we would like to keep our pre-pandemic meal prices. That would be two dollars and eighty-five cents for paid lunches and one dollar and forty-five cents for paid breakfast. Reduced lunches would cost forty cents as mandated by the USDA, unless the North Carolina Legislature decides to pay for the reduced lunches as they have this year. The state of North Carolina is planning to pick up the thirty cent charge for reduced breakfast. And of course, Kathy is requesting that both of these recommendations be approved. So that again, vendor recommendations and meal price recommendations.
Any questions from any board members? Concerns, comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Bowman submitted a motion. Mr. McLean seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Let the record show unanimous agreement and approval.
Good, thank you.
Now we have I M G, the resolution by the Alexander County Board of Education opposing House Bill two nineteen charter school omnibus. Ms. Mahaffey?
Okay, House Bill two nineteen. Charter schools are entitled at this time to their proportionate share of what the amount of money the county commissioners give us, plus funds and forfeitures. And we have done that for all the time, the last twenty years. Now, the proposal before the legislature is to give them their proportionate share of all the other funds that we collect. So this, this would mean if this bill passes, that if, well, for instance, we have written a grant for, to Appalachian that runs through our books here, that the charter schools, the students from our school system that go to charter schools would be able, would get their proportionate share of that, whatever, whatever it is. Also, any Head Start funds. Well, we know that we can't pay a proportionate share out of Head Start funds, so that means it would have to come from local funds. So even though they don't have a Head Start program, they would be able to get Head Start funds.
Same would be with R O T C.
R O T C.
They wouldn't even have to have an R O T C program, but get a cut of that.
Since we have it.
Since we.
They get a cut of it.
They would, if this bill passes.
So the motion is for the board to vote on supporting this bill or not supporting this bill?
To support the resolution against the bill.
Very well. Thank you very much. So do we have any comments or concerns from the board in supporting the resolution against this bill? Do we have a motion to support the resolution against this bill two nineteen charter school?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion submitted by Mr. Dagan Hart, and the motion seconded by Mr. Reese. All in favor, vote aye. All against? Let the record show that the board unanimously supports the administration in our position against the resolution of House bill nineteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we are complete with the open session of the school board meeting, and now we're entering, about to enter into the closed session, the executive session for North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen dot eleven, A, Section Six. The board will enter closed session to discuss personnel, North Carolina, General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, Sub eighty-six. And the content will be personnel, administrative personnel issues as follows, and information related to personnel activity. This concludes the open session of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.